Okay. The next item is a public hearing for 1500 Hancock Street, certificate of consistency, planning board case 2017-COC-01. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11, Mass. General Laws, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, and the provisions of the Quincy Center district urban revitalization and development plan, an urban renewal plan for the Quincy Center urban revitalization district dated May 7, 2007, as amended to U R D P. The Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 15, at 7:57 in the first boards' room in Commissions, Quincy City Hall, 1505 Hancock Street, on the application of Hancock Q Plaza, LLC, 20 Linden Street, Austin, Mass., 02134, for a certificate of consistency as defined within the Quincy zoning ordinance, Title 17, Section 10, and in accordance with Section 12.02, Section 2, overall development strategy of the U R D P, and pursuant to Section 8.3 Quincy Center slash Quincy Center urban revitalization district slash urban renewal. The applicant, application provides for the construction of a seven-story residential building with retail and commercial space on the ground floor and 171 residential units, with a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Parking provided with dedicated spaces within the adjacent parking garage to be constructed. Approximately 21,850 square feet foot building footprint, with a plus or minus 153,000 square feet of total gross floor area. Subject property is located within the urban revitalization district of the Quincy Center zoning district, dash 15, and is more particularly identified on a city of Quincy successus plan 1142, as block five, lot B. Planning Board shall issue a certificate of consistency upon finding that the proposed project is consistent with the goals, objectives, and requirements set forth in the U R D P. Well, that's really all I have to say. Thank you. I'm sorry, would you identify yourself?
Bob Hines, Mr. Chairman and three members of the board. My name is Bob Hines, and I represent LBC. Before you today, we have the principal of LBC, Adrian Shapiro, and also Jonathan Miller , live from this company. As, as you read in the attic, in the, in the introduction, they have hopes right now of building 171 commercial, residential units, commercial. This, this comes under the Quincy Center revitalization. What they're doing right now is, right, they're also before the city council under an LDA. Now, I'm going to explain the LDA in this PowerPoint presentation, but we call it LDA. It's a land disposition agreement with the city. But reality is, it's also land swap. And it's not, they're not just going to buy the city's land, they're actually swapping their own land, which we consider much more valuable, and getting land in the back. And I'm going to demonstrate that in the, in the PowerPoint. But right now, this is the section of Quincy Center we're speaking of. As you can see, it's all one-story buildings. And they're all, I hate to say this, but some of the dilapidated buildings, some are, some are empty, or more to the corner, and there is some just not being used. And it just looks to be broken, but it doesn't look good. So, the goal is, I don't know if I'm going to do this right. And that's an overview of what the, what the building looks like. Now, we look at the, when I mentioned the land swap earlier, if you look at the red pile of this, right there, that is actually their land, right now, as we speak. They come into an agreement, it's before the city council, now, to give up that portion of land, which funds Hancock Street and Quidditch Street. And the city turn, they'll be, they'll be getting this land from the city. Now, if you look at that land, that is a huge piece of property, it's front of Hancock Street, that is the frontage, that, that is right in the main street. And they're going to be giving up that. Right now, there's 10 feet of sidewalk, when they give up, there'll be 18 feet. The reason they're giving that up is because the city wants to make it more of a village-type setting. And you do that by bringing this building, the building they proposed, back. The city will take over that land, this land, and I'll explain later on what's going to be there. And they're going to be getting that, which is going to involve part of their parking issue. This is an overview of the area we're speaking of, right there. As you can see, it goes right into the parking lot, there is proposals on the road for parking garage, that they're going to be involved in. Again, another overview. Now, here's what they plan. As you can see, right now, again, we're at the very beginning stage of this, they're very, they're starting this out brand-new. That one-story structure they showed you at the beginning was right there. They've gone to transform that to this building, bottom being commercial, and that being residential. This is the land I described to you earlier, that goes, you saw off the side. What that will be, is that's going to be a public atrium, the city's going to have, that they will build. And this is going to give access for the people to come, when they need to go to the back, to the parking garage, to other things that will be there, they'll be, that's, that's going to be a public atrium, it's going to be connected to the buildings, that you're going to see. It's more like a, there's going to be little boutiques there, there's going to be a little kiosk there, it's just going to be available to the public, right there. That way, the back isn't blocked off. Now, that is what I called, and what I mentioned was a land swap. This building will be back from where the property line is right now, back in about 10 feet, I believe. So, it's going to be an 18 feet of sidewalk there, and this is the other part of the land swap they're going to be given. There, too, will be getting the back, if you recall that in the diagram. Now, this is the night vision of this. This is what they're proposing, overall. Again, we're talking 171 units, residential units of their commercial below, and this will be the atrium. The reason why the city had looked at this, and I know this discussion with the LBC, is for the simple, simple reason, it's attractive. It gives the ability of, what, what they want to make this is more of a desk room friendly area, what they want to make it more of a, a retrist patient type area, where people will be walking. Right now, as we, as we, as we see, there's the West of Chestnut, that is packed. People are moving in, people love the apartment setting. In the beginning, the, the first proposal that they had proposed was a, was a hotel. I remember the board remembers that, at one point, we spoke about hotel. Financially, it doesn't make sense, hotels will not survive in that section. So, they looked at the opportunity of an apartment, and they feel that this is going to work. This, again, has been designed with LBC, they have contacted the planning department, they're going to keep working the planning department, they're pretty far away, right now, from any vote, because it still has not been a ruling by the city council regards to the land swap, or the LDA, as some people call it. So, right now, President, that's all we're waiting for, right now, and then we're going to move forward here in the planning department, even further. I ask for this opportunity to come before this board, just to actually explain where we're going with this, and probably to take into consideration. There's going to be lots of questions, there has to be lots of questions, this is Quincy Center, and a lot of things have been proposed in the past Quincy Center. But we believe that this will ultimately take flight, and it's going to be a great location for the city, it's going to be a great property for the city, and it's going to be attractive, everything else is going on at Quincy Center. I know there's proposals, uh, before you, one was continuing for the back lot, one was the O'Connell building, Chestnut Place. This, there is a lot of work going to be done in that area, and I think one of the things we have to look at is it all fits, like the puzzle, that's what planners do. We make it seem like a puzzle all fit nice. We believe this will fit nice, and this will attract the clientele, the residents that we look for. You look at Deco, you look at West of Chestnut, a lot of young people, they want to move to the city, they don't want to drive. It's amazing to me when I go to Deco and West of Chestnut, how people don't drive. But, they like to commute, they like, don't mind walking, and this is going to be right in the center. We think it's a great project. Now, again, I know there's going to be questions on the road, this is the first presentation we're going to give you, we're going to be back before you, uh, within next, next month, I believe we are, but in the meantime, we are waiting for the council to vote on the LDA. So, we're here for any questions right now. We didn't bring the engineer here, we didn't bring the architect here, for the simple reason that this is very preliminary, right now, so.
Any questions from the board members?
Just a question, just help me out. So, that little passageway there, or the atrium?
Yeah.
What is there now? Like, I'm generally, when it comes to this...
It's actually, you know Hancock Tobacco?
Yes.
That's it, right there.
Okay, okay.
That was Hancock Tobacco, right there.
Okay.
And they're going to remove that completely, have a walkway atrium.
Okay.
You can visualize it, you know, but, yeah, because that was Hancock Tobacco, right there.
It's very attractive.
Yeah. And, and they make, again, it's something that we want to be told from there.
Mr. Stevens?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. One question, I'm, I'm sure that Mr. Stevens can, can answer it. So, the atrium is going to dump out into a network of interconnected landscaped passageways?
Let me just go back, and I'll show you. Is that, the one more back?
Because that's what I'm having a hard time connecting with.
The atrium, that's the atrium, the inside.
Yep.
If you walk back there, what you will come to is, I'm going to go back, what you will come to is the parking lot out here. And see, like, you'll be walking through the atrium, and this is, by the way, this is the, uh, the, the...
Well, go to the larger lot, that atrium.
Down right there?
Other, other way. Go, go the other way. I'm trying to put it in the context of the...
Oh, right there, yeah. Not me, continue, send them, you can see right there.
So, this is, uh, sorry, Jonathan Miller, from LBC. So, the atrium will bring you from the street, through the back of the building, and into the proposed parking area. Case you have, and this area would be hardscape, and it would bring you right to the proposed parking garage.
Right, so that parking garage, that's a...
That's not the, that's something that's going to be, we're going to be discussing down the road, with the combination with all the other development areas, a little parking, parking garage. That ultimately...
The city's building a parking garage.
Yeah. And I think, I, there are going to be tenants, I believe, in this parking garage, too.
All right. I'm, I'm just going to jump in here.
Sure.
Okay, so, this is a, a certificate of consistency in the urban renewal plan. This is a little bit different than what this board typically sees for site plan or special permit review. The city's been working with this development team, LBC, for, for over a year, but it really got going when we adopted the fourth amendment to the urban renewal plan, which occurred this past June. And if you go back to that, that map, please, you would have seen the first version of the Hancock Lot redevelopment map, and in there, we had parcels identified, R1, R2, R3. And what is before the board now is, is two redevelopment projects. That's the Dennis Ryan Parkway that we continued earlier, and now this project, this proposal of 1500 Hancock Streets is now before this board. Now, what's unique in this instance is the city, through its urban renewal plan and its stated urban renewal strategy, has always pledged to do the upgrades to these infrastructure improvements. The cities, and, and that's for the whole lot. And other, you know, if this is a pipe that goes, you know, down Hancock beyond this lot, you know, the city's chasing that pipe, pipe to replace the whole thing, as part of the overall improvements to the downtown. The other thing the city's pledged is to construct a new parking garage on its former lot that used to be a surface lot. So, right now, the city has Desmond Parking Associates under contract to design a new parking garage. We believe that'll be a 650 to 700 space garage, that's that very large square you see on that lot. That lot, well, part of that, the development or the financing of that lot, we have earmarked spaces for the proposed Dennis Ryan Parkway tower, that's before you, the COC, and we're also doing the same thing with this proposal, is earmarking spaces in that new garage. Now, it's, it's not going to be 100%, we're looking at anywhere between 30, 40, 45% of the spaces will be earmarked for these two developments that are before the board, leaving, you know, 60, 50 to 60% open for existing users and the general public. The other important part of having LBC come before the board, too, is last week, the planning department organized a meeting with all the DBW disciplines, health department and, and city engineer, building department, to discuss the entirety of the lot. And I believe we're going to have comments that are going to come forward on site-specific elements that are going to be used for both recommendations. Because, again, the city is in a unique position of designing the site improvements, we have the folks under contract. Another unique aspect, it came up on this atrium, that was a push by the city to include that atrium. There is an old stormwater drainage system that goes underneath those buildings. We've made some improvements. A few years back, we opened the, the Town Brook relocation project. Part of that permit is, and we've always stated this, is we had to redesign a new stormwater system for the whole lot. Well, there's, there's existing lines going underneath this building from the Ross Garage area, so you, you see an atrium, we see a nice public access, we see a penetration into the Hancock Lot, so folks coming down Hancock Street can go through this atrium to access the garage. Us engineering ones see a utility corridor that is going underneath that atrium, carrying sewer lines, water lines, and drain lines as well, you know, so there's, there's more of a benefit than just the folks, but that was, the city had negotiated with LBC on that atrium, and, and we think it's a fabulous design element to this. This developer also agreed to step back this development, 10 feet off the property line, again, so we could get wider sidewalks. It's the same concept we deployed for the West of Chestnut. For those of you who have had the chance to walk through there, you can see the wider sidewalk there, and the potentials for a more active streetscape.
If you see, that's existing storm drain, and then we go forward, this storm drain location, that's been done with there, and there's enough case two of it. So, as, as Mr. Stevens said, there is going to be a change in that, and that's exactly one of the reasons why there's a land swap going on, because the city needs to maintain control of that.
So, in the middle there, Rob, that's the surface lot, that you'll come out of the atrium, and you'll be standing in the surface lot? That's currently gray? That area with that little path? In front of the fours, I guess. You, you've pinpointed a very unique design element. Back in Urban Renewal Amendment 4, we envisioned an, an internal roadway going through there. I would say the Desmond engineers for the garage have introduced some new concepts that has that as a public space, and, and we are currently exploring some alternatives to that. Where there, there wouldn't be any cars there, there would be more of a, a public space, and now we're working on, you know, concepts, you know, that, you know, would it be a market square that was once proposed on the other side? You know, it's not just going to be a, a nice little green spot, but really make it an active working, you know, public space, with both green and, and, you know, decorative pavers, could you have events there, you know, those type of things. So, we're exploring some of those ideas. And as far as the timing on that, I would think could be as, as soon as April, the city administration will be before the city council, introducing some of the results of the garage type analysis, and the direction forward on that.
Just another, the type of, the, the, these new developments tend to have an all-inclusive feel, where everything's in the area, where people will watch, where people will hang around, you look at Deco, you know, other than no stores around, you really don't have to leave that, really, get everything from inside the wine tasting rooms, and, and this is what this is supposed to be, really, when you look at these type of developments, where people live in the same, but they hang around the same, there's restaurants and everything, it brings life to an area. And unfortunately, Quincy Center's been suffering from no, not having life for years, and it's hard to have more than just, I hate to say this, but just bars there. Have people live there, have people committed to being around there, and this is the type of thing that, that it does.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, it is a public hearing, so I would ask anyone in the public who would like to come up and state, just identify yourself.
I'll go for ours, please.
Thank you. John Rofel, again, 62 Grand Mall Road. This is just a copy, I, I went up to the building department, or online, like, this is, this is their car, so when you look at that, you can't even see any buildings, so it's hard to do a building. I was just trying to find out simply, do you know how big the square footage of the Nova is? Like, what's the footprint of the, the Nova that's there? Like, you have the, you have the Nova, you're going to build the atrium, how big is the square foot of the Nova?
I'll, I'm going to have to get an exact number.
6,000 square feet of the land?
Oh, oh...
Of the, of the land, 6,000 square feet.
Of, of the footprint? Okay, so there's 28 units in, in the Nova, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then one downstairs, where you rent out the store, so if you say dwelling units, you've got 29 units there right now?
No, we have 28, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 29 was the retail, yes.
Okay, okay, so, and now, now they got 171, that's 200 dwelling units, okay? It's very hard, this is like in math, to do the math equation of the FAR, because you need to know what the square footage is, so they're talking about a land swap, we don't know what the land swap, so, unlike that first one, where I'm absolutely dead against it, and, you know, will lie in front of the tractors, okay? I know something's going to happen on this LBC property, and we just want to make sure we do it right, okay? It, it needs to be done right. They are giving us land in front, but that land in front, they're probably going to use themselves and put patio out there for the restaurants that are on there, and the atrium is just connecting the two buildings. So, basically, you know, we're, we're giving just more reasons to bond, and when we're saying, like, the city plans to build a parking lot, well, the city doesn't have any idea how we're going to pay for that parking lot. So, by the permitting board keep giving permits to things, it, it makes them say, okay, well now we have to do the parking lot. I still think that whole parking lot in back could be all green space. I don't think we need to develop that at all. That would be best for the taxpayers, no risk. Why are the taxpayers taking all the risk, in case the diff area does not work? The numbers do not, I mean, I've been going through the bonds we have issued, we have about 80 million, maybe even more than 80 million of bands right now, and the bonds that we just issued in January, they're all associated, all the money, the, the Ross parking garage already bonded, already spent. So, basically, they're looking to do design and planning and stuff based on stuff, I don't really know what needs to be there, but, again, 200 divided by, let's say if they have 20,000 square feet, or 25,000 square feet, that's only about 150 square feet per dwelling unit. And technically, without us giving them any parking, let's say if they're going to develop just on their land right now, they're really not providing any parking. And the garage is the public garage that, you know, we need to come here first, and let's build a garage. You guys need to be more involved in the planning process. I mean, I heard a rumor that Hancock Street is going to become a one-way street, I mean, is that true?
No.
Okay, I mean, that's, I heard this from one of the developers, I won't name names, okay? But, um, it's basically like, the people deserve to know what's going on, there needs to be a much better master plan. LBC's definitely one of our partners, they own a whole bunch of stuff on the parking way, and, you know, they came in, and they took some buildings, and they have the financing, am I correct? We're not going to hear from LBC saying, we don't have any money, which we hear from many of our other people. We do have a developer here that can fund projects, but we need to make sure the projects are, are done the best way, you know, for the taxpayers and for the people. We need more green space, you know, the green space, like, I don't think there's any green space involved in this at all, and the only green space that's provided in the O'Connell deal is green space that the city is giving to them, and we're even paying O'Connell to maintain that, which I believe that we don't have to pay to water the grass, and I will take that as a time to stop. Thank you.
And again, I go back to what Mr. Hines represented, it's early on in the process and they're...
No, it is early on, but like I said, it's, it's like, what's the rush? We're rushing everything, bringing everything together and stuff, and, you know, there is no rush, I mean, we're going to get to the finish line, you know, the rush is this, the rush is, we need to authorize more bonds, that's why they're rushing. Everything is about bond authorization, and to stop the bond authorization, I would like to see all these projects just on a slowdown, let's build a parking garage. How much is this parking garage going to cost us? You know, I mean, I know this is about just this project right here, so on this project, I'm concerned with the, the floor area ratio, which is very dense, again, it, it's very dense, and again, here's some more pictures, that zone there, too, it's not in a flood zone, but again, that area, all around there, is a wet area in the back. Thanks very much.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak?
The concern I have, granted, is early in the process, but parking. The Squanum Newport Avenue property was talking one space per unit. This project, as near as I can tell, they strictly want to reserve space in the pending garage, at about 50 spaces, for 170-unit building. Assuming the half-space per unit number, I'm not sure their exact mix of the one bedrooms, two bedrooms, or anything else, we're looking at 100, 120 parking spaces. They want to come in at 50. Now, then when we look at the other parking problems, we get to witness a row, what John Rofel had to say, we're talking about sharing the parking garage, the parking space capacity that they currently have, which is about 500, 600 spaces for the Hancock Lot. That gets used fairly well by the courthouse during the day. We're talking about not dedicating, we're adding maybe 100, 150 more spaces, but dedicating 40% of that for new development. We're taking down the courthouse capacity by about 100, 150 spaces. And these are not necessarily shared propositions. The O'Connell property parking proposals to go in the basement, that will be their space, it will not be a shareable proposition. Not sure what they're planning for LBC, but the fact of the matter is, they're talking 50 spaces, when they should be talking 100, 120. If their tenants come in and rent from the city, which is possible, because you lease permit, they lease permit for the raw space, at this point, we don't have the parking. It's just not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Or be recorded?
If I could address one issue, I want to thank you for saying that. You're actually looking at 125 parking spots, so I think that kind of helps.
Your building's 75, or your...
They, they look at it, they designate 100, building to have 125 total parking spots.
Total parking in the building, or reserving the garage?
Garage, that's what they're looking at.
And the numbers are even worse, in terms of what's left over for the community?
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I have two pieces of correspondence that were emailed to the planning department, one dated March 8. Dear Mr. Fatsis and others, I wish to have my opposition to the application of Adrian Shapiro, Edward Shapiro, and Alec Mottaw, for the construction of a seven-story, 171 apartments with parking provided with dedicated spaces within adjacent municipal garage to be constructed, noted as public record under opposition of this application. This is within Ward 5. I did request a public, a public, a public meeting with Council Hughes for an explanation, however, I've never heard back from her. As one of the closest abuddits to the Hancock Lot across the street at 31 to 37 Revere Road, I only learned of this public hearing from reading the legal ad in today's March 8 Patriot Ledger, page 23. The plan, this plan also involves giving up public land, a portion of the Hancock Lot to build luxury apartments and taxpayers-funded municipal garage. A week's notice with very little of public, publicly about, publicly about this public hearing, to me is shameful. Please see to all amendments of the planning board receive copies of this letter. That's the letter dated March 8, uh, email, excuse me. Again, the department received an email from Arlene Goodman, 310, March 10. I did receive a written notice in yesterday's mail, which was March 9. The notice was stamped by the city clerk on February 8, 28. Please let me know that my written statement is acceptable, and will be read out loud at the public hearing. Thank you, Arlene Goodman. All right, so, we need to continue this public hearing? Are we looking at, April's getting off of Friday? May 10? May 10? A motion to...
Yes, that'd be fine.
Does that work? Okay. A motion to continue this public hearing to May 10? For second discussion, all those in favor? Aye. The next item is 189 to 263 Hancock Street, North Quincy MBTA Station, certificate of consistency, planning board case 2017-COC-02. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11, Mass. General Laws, and Title 17 of the Quincy Municipal Code, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 15, at 8:26 on the first floor, Boards and Commission Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of North Quincy Partners LLC, 60 Mall Road, Burlington, Mass., 1803... on the application of North Quincy Partners LLC, 60 Mall Road, Burlington, Mass., 1803, for a certificate of consistency as defined within the zoning ordinance, Title 17, Section 8.5, Transit Oriented District. The application provides for the construction of a mixed-use development that consists of 610 residential units with retail and commercial space on the ground floor, totaling 50,000 square feet. The applicant has also proposed to provide 1,600 structured parking spaces for use by residents, business patrons, and MBTA commuters. The subject property consists of two posses of land totaling 303,698 plus or minus square feet, more particularly identified as 189 Hancock Street and 263 Hancock Street, shown on a city of Quincy's Assessments Plan 6039, Block 10, Lot A, and Map 6038, Block 33, Lot 1. The planning board shall issue a TOD certificate of consistency upon finding that the proposed project is consistent with the goals, objectives, and requirements as set forth in the Quincy Zoning Ordinance, Title 17, Section 8.5, in the North Quincy POD Design Guide. Is no honing here? No. JB's there.
Mr. Chairman, three members of the board, good evening. My name is Paul Hines, and I'm representing North Quincy Partners LLC. They before you today on the COC, certificate of consistency for Transit Oriented District. We're speaking about the North Quincy train station. That's what I was speaking about. Before you today is DJ McKinnon from Atlantic Development, Julie Burman from Mizuto Development, Lauren Jezysny, Nikki from Mizuto Development, Josh Swirley, professional engineer, and Dave Starkless, who's one of the architects. What they plan, what they hopes are down the road to build here before you and have you approve is this, they're looking for a mixed-use. We all know the North Quincy train station. It's old, it's beat up, parking is horrible, and just visually, it's not a good place to look at. So they're looking to develop into a commercial and also residential area. What they're looking to do is this, they're looking to put in 50,000 square feet of commercial. And you'll see that in the drawing. They're looking to put in 610 apartments and 1,600 parking spaces. They're actually working with the MBTA. This is the MBTA property. They're actually working with the MBTA to build a garage. I'm not going to go further into it, because right now we have the actual, the gentleman that actually thought this whole thing out with a great idea is Mr. DJ.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've done a little bit of the presentation and, okay, I'm sorry. DJ McKinnon from Atlantic Development. Okay. Well, I've introduced everybody else that's here, a lot of our team. So tonight, before we get into the presentation, I just want to start off by saying, we're trying to take this proposal in pieces. It's a large site, it's a large development. So tonight's portion of the presentation is based on just the civil and site portion. We're not here to present the traffic, the architectural, many other elements. We wanted to kind of start at the ground level, give an overview. And we have Josh Swirley from Boller that can talk about site and civil. And then follow up at the next meeting, where we'll start to get into other elements of the development. So that we can kind of take it in pieces and do it on that basis. So with that, let me just get this all turned on. Okay, we've got our point, we're ready to go. So we'll start off the first slide, just the introductory slide. So for tonight's agenda, we wanted to recap the January planning board presentation. Next, talk about the Transit Oriented District approval process. Following that with kind of an overview of the proposed project. After that, get into the site and civil planning board submission. That's in front of you. And then we'll finish up with public benefits and next steps. So we can move on to the recap of the January planning board presentation. And with that, the site itself, Bob mentioned a little bit of this. It's the entire North Quincy MBTA Station property. It's about seven acres. Today, essentially represents an open parking lot for 852 parking spaces. As part of our proposal, we will replace all 852 spaces in a new garage that like us to expedite and get online as soon as we can. From a timing standpoint, this started a while ago, back when the MBTA issued the initial RFP in July of 2015, followed by a bid due date of November 2015. And then in April of 2016, a little less than a year ago, they awarded the RFP to our group of Mizuto and Atlantic. And since then, have been working through quite a lot of process, working with the MBTA, working with the city to get all the background, all the other information we need to then prepare the plans and come for you tonight. I'll be very quick on this, I think most people know the property. This really just shows some of the big elements. Wallaston Beach, the Ponce River, Hancock Street in this area. And we can kind of zoom in a little bit more. Existing site with Hancock Street along the bottom here, East and West Squonam Street along the side, some of the other landmarks, Walgreens, North Quincy High School here. As most people know, the entrance to the site today for vehicles is right here at this traffic signal. Got the loop to come in and out and do the drop-off, the kiss and ride. Again, just an open surface lot on this side, open surface lot here. We have the North Head House in this area to enter the T. Then the track and the platform's right here. The track runs right along this side of the site. And then the bus station at this end of the site, right here. Just a couple of images. This is just the view from Hancock Street, looking at the entrance. Little bit of a close-up of the North Head House today. Little bit different view of the North Head House from the other direction. And then the West Squonam Street bus terminal over in this area. Next, we'll talk about the Transit Oriented District approval process, which the goal of that under Section 17.8.5 is to encourage mixed-use development at the transit locations. The process that we're looking to follow is the consistency review by the planning board, which includes making sure we conform to the Transit Oriented District guidelines. Excuse me, we obviously need to be in accordance with the TOD permitted uses, follow the dimensional requirements, and then meet the requirements for off-street parking as well. Now, the portion of the TOD district are the comprehensive design guidelines that this board actually voted in, I believe it was just toward the end of the year, around that timeframe. So I think you're familiar with those. The design guidelines have a heavy focus on the streetscape character and connectivity of the development, as well as appropriate ways to manage parking and transportation. Includes sections on architectural design as well as sustainability. And then now we can kind of get into an overview of the project that I'll do, and then I'm going to turn it over to Josh Swirley after that. So on the proposed project, this is an image, it's actually being updated right now, but it's the image that we've used a few times. Essentially, what it shows is a view across from North Quincy High School. In the existing, because we'll call it more the McDonald's parking lot area, looking from that vantage point, our proposal on that end of the site is to have kind of the retail component with retail, possible other restaurant type uses, have those at ground level with the multifamily apartments above. Shows, this is kind of the busway up in that area. And what we're trying to do is create these nice pedestrian connections, including a connection up to Hancock Street at that area. Again, this is very conceptual. These elevations are being worked on, and at our next meeting, we'll have an update of some of the architectuals, if it helps to give the context. Excuse me.
You're going to make it?
Going to try. Going to try. Okay, thanks, I shouldn't have said that. I was hoping for the gentleman. So, let's see, just starting at ground level. And we have Hancock Street along the bottom of the site. We have East and West Squonam Street at this side with the traffic signal. And our proposal on ground level is to have that last rendering, so it was kind of from this direction right here. So what we were looking at was the retail portion on ground level. And then in front of that, we have kind of a traditional retail parking field. Because with the various use, today, there's just one use on the property, it's the MBTA. Ultimately, we're really talking three different uses. We'll still have the MBTA. Josh is going to explain how we manage these uses from a parking flow. But just from kind of a layout standpoint, the retail, this retail here needs to function with its own parking field at ground level, as traditional retail would. So that is on that portion of the site. Coming in the main entrance drive, we're looking to have two sections of the building come down to ground level, one on each side for kind of the residential core that would come down for people that would be entering the residential area, leasing office and things like, things like that, as well as just a couple of small retail pieces at those corners to liven up the streetscape a bit. Next, if we take a look from the top down, it helps show where some of the other key elements are. So the parking garage actually is kind of buried in this portion of the site intentionally. The idea is that it connects directly to the head house, so people that are parking in the garage can just take the elevator down and go directly into the head house and down into the platform, which is a nice feature. But at the same time, we really didn't want to feature the garage as, you know, one of the principal elements of the development from the streetscape. So along the streetscape, we have residential facades that run throughout. Again, we're looking at the roof down. You know, the intention is, is that this would be broken up to kind of three different city blocks as you're looking at it from the streetscape with different types of material, different articulation of the building and so forth. But this helps to show, again, where the key elements are. The retail sits just under this section of the residential here. And then these are residential pieces that run along the streetscape. This is my last one for now, so I think I committed. So this is a proposed building section, so looking through where the garage is. So again, we have the retail at ground level here, the parking for the retail in front of it. The garage is sitting up in the air above that. We're holding a height of, I believe it's 16 to 17 feet in this area, so that it feels open when you're under the garage, going in and out of the retail. This actually is the ramp going up into the garage from a cross-section standpoint. The main entrance is right about here, so this is where you'd be entering the site. So people would enter the site, go up the ramps. And then on the north end of the site, we have a residential area here with parking beneath it for residential. So that's kind of how the cross-section works. With that, all right.
Just in time. Hi, Josh Swirley, professional engineer with Boller Engineering. We prepared the site civil plans that were submitted as a part of the application. If you can go to the next slide here. I will, I'll give an overview of the site. Some of it might be a little bit redundant with what DJ just ran through, but I'll try not to do that and just focus on some of the finer points of the development as it relates to civil engineering matters. So I'll go through kind of an overview of the existing and proposed site features and conditions. I'll speak to the stormwater management improvements associated with the development. And I'll also get into site circulation and a brief discussion of utility improvements associated with the project as well. So go to the next slide. We'll start with the circulation aspects. And I'm going to go through four topics for circulation. This is labeled as pedestrian, but it could be really labeled as pedestrian bicycle.